Okay, thank you for coming today. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We will start with the flag salute. Emily, will you lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Do we have any changes or additions to the agenda?
We do not. Thank you.
I move we approve this consent agenda as presented.
I second.
All in favor? Aye. That takes us to the superintendent's report.
Blue means go. Okay. All right. Well, we're excited this evening to celebrate the start of the school year because our last meeting was the night before school started. So we're officially in session. Everybody preschoolers, kindergartners, all the kids are back to school. So we wanted to give you an update on our enrollment for this year. When do we report enrollment? This is all set out by guidelines from the state and requirements that we have to comply with for reporting. So in September, because it is the start of the school year, it's not on September 1st. It's always on the fourth school day in September. So for us, that was last Friday. So that's our first count. Every other month of the school year, October through June, the official count date is the first school day of that month, which is often the first of the month. Our next count date will be on Tuesday, October 1st. So why do we do this reporting? This is what drives our revenue as a school district. We are directly funded based upon the number of students that we serve. It is based upon FTE or full-time equivalent. So for example, if a student is attending half of a day, maybe at Wisdom Ridge Academy and half a day through homeschool, we don't receive full funding. We receive a proportional amount of the funding for that child. On this slide, you have the enrollment by school. I think it's helpful for us as we're thinking about our facilities to just think about how many humans are in each space. So South Ridge, right now, the head count, so that's the number of different children is 751. But you can see that the FTE is 750.08. So that means we have a couple of kids that are doing part of their day there, but not all of their day. Similarly, at Union Ridge, we are at 706. I believe at one point, Union was larger than South, and we've done some rebounding. But now what we're seeing is actually South Ridge is outpacing Union Ridge with the number of students within that boundary. So it's definitely something to keep our eye on. Sunset Ridge is 613 and View Ridge is 668. It is a shared campus, and we do a great job of keeping our fifth and sixth graders really on one side of that campus and seventh and eighth on the other. But just do realize that we have approximately 1,300 people under one roof at that campus. And at Ridgefield High, we have just over 1,200 students. That's where you're going to always see the biggest difference between head count and FTE because of the number of juniors and seniors that are participating at Cascadia Tech. So that's a split FTE and also students who are participating and running start with Clark College, which is really flow-through funding for that purpose. So altogether, our head count was 4,116 on that official count date of Friday. That would count any student who had attended at least once since the start of school. So if a student was sick on Friday, that doesn't mean we don't get to claim them. But we have to see them at least once. So if a student hasn't shown up in that first week and a half or so, then we do not get to count them and claim them for funding for the month of September, even if they showed up this week. The FTE you can see is 4,026, so about 90 full-time equivalent reduction when we look at how much our students actually enrolled. There's just an explanation there at the bottom for you on head count versus FTE. I also wanted to share with you enrollment by grade level. This is definitely something that we look at as we're projecting out what it might look like for staffing for next year. And obviously, as we're thinking about facilities as well. So you can see from kinder to first grade, we have fewer kindergartners coming this year than we did last year. We do anticipate that we'll continue to take some students in over the course of the year. So we monitor and track this every month. At the end of the year, we actually will look at what's the average FTE over the course of the year. You can see last year's kindergarten class, this year's first grade class was just a tiny bit smaller than the class before them, third grade and fourth grade. So you can see that there is actually some decline as it looks like from fourth grade down to kinder with those subsequent classes. Fifth and sixth grade are kind of in the middle point of those. And then at seventh and eighth, we're in the mid 300s along with ninth, 10th, 11th. The current senior class is our last, what I'm going to call small class. 281 is not small to President Jones, but how many did you graduate with? 90, less than 100. Yeah. So this is our last small senior class at 281. I always want you to have the trend data. It does help us to predict and project into the future. We don't ever look at just one year of data. We're looking at data over a longer period of time. And I bucketed it for you based on the level of the school because I know that facilities and future bonds are top of mind for many folks in our community. So you can see here, starting back in 2019 and then 2020. So COVID hits right in the middle of those column two and column three. So we did see a decrease in enrollment that year, really across, almost across the board. Not so much at the secondary level. And then as we went into 2021, you can see that number bounced back. So the enrollment did not stay depressed for us. I think once we were back in school full-time, most of our students and families returned to our public education system. So that's positive for us. And then you can see the last four years up through last Friday to see where we're at. And you can see that it's consistently been up when we think about the FTE enrollment, which is increasing our revenue, which is great, but it also increases our expenses and puts increased pressure on our space. Just a graphic to show you all the kids and then really by level. When you think about that, that blue chunk, those are elementary kids. And again, over that same five-year period, so you can see everybody kind of takes a little bit of a nosedive in 2021 when we're in the middle of virtual and hybrid schooling. And then you can see there's kind of this slight increase across the board. K through four is five grade levels. So we would expect to see a bigger chunk there, right? Because we've got five different grade levels there. The red and the yellow, it's representing our seven, eight, and our five, six. So if you combine those together, you're going to get closer to a third of our students. And then the green is the high school. The other one that's interesting to note on this is the orange, which is our ALE, our Alternative Learning Environment Enrollment. And so you can see that it was just barely there. And as we came out of the pandemic, it has continued to increase. And I know Alan and Dringa has shared with us at Wisdom Ridge, they are starting the year with the most students they've ever had enrolled in that ALE environment. So a couple of things, just, you know, we are pretty equally split across the different grade bands. I think we will continue to see an increase in alternative learning environments and the desire of families for something more flexible. But you also can see that the line is not going up at a 10% rate anymore. We have definitely slowed in our growth in student enrollment. And last, I just really wanted to give a shout out to all of our educators, our administrators, our teachers, our paras, amazing bus drivers, like happy faces. Every time I go by them on the road, they wave and smile. And just really wonderful first day of school, first week of school, first two weeks of school. So kinder started last week, but lots of hugs on that first day. So lots of appreciation for our families for entrusting us with their most precious asset, their children, and to our staff for really welcoming them back with open arms. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
Using my mic, Dani. So this isn't necessarily around the enrollment as it relates to our revenue stream, but looking at elementary school enrollment changes in terms of South Ridge surpassing Union Ridge. Do we have a sense of? This is a different conversation. I would be curious and somewhat concerned just to know in terms of what other housing developments are coming online in our community. Because I understand the boundary change we, the district did a few years ago and the need for that with, I believe, a hope that there would be a third elementary school that would be kind of taking some of that boundary to the third school. So the yo-yoing back and forth for neighborhoods, having to go to one school, then the other, then the other, then the other. I know, you know, some families have been hit with the back and forth quite a few times. So that obviously is not something we want to try to see happen. I'm just curious if we have like a sense of in the next year or two, what other housing developments are getting moved into? And if we could look at that would be great if we need to look at neighborhoods that haven't been here that maybe would, in a not super streamlined map, maybe potentially get assigned to different schools if we needed to do that.
Yeah, it's always challenging to go through redrawing boundaries.
Yeah.
And even more so when it's not for the purpose of opening a new school. So I myself am in a neighborhood where kids have gone to one and then the other and flip-flopped back. And so we definitely can come back to the board with some information about what's under development, what the anticipated enrollment would be. Right now, like off the cuff, I will tell you that I think there's more development in the South Ridge boundary that's currently existing. But we'll be coming back to you as we think about levy and potential capital levy to look at what could we possibly do?
Okay, thanks.
All right, now, do you have any other updates?
Shouldn't have muted the mic. Nothing huge. I do want to just give a shout out to Joe Weiger, our communications. If you have kids in our district, you probably got this in the mail, hopefully. So we have our new school calendars out that are full of great information and lots of fun pictures of our staff and our students. So if you didn't get one, I would like when we have a few extra here at Central Services. It's been a really fantastic start to the year. I have the sense and what I'm hearing back from folks is that people are just excited. People are a little more positive, a little happier, and our kids are so excited to be back. There are some new procedures at various schools that are implemented. So I just really want to encourage families, if your kid comes home and says, I can't do this, or I can't do that, please call your school principal. They want to talk with you about what they're implementing. I was excited to hear from a teacher today from our high school. They piloted this last year, but this year, every high school classroom has a pocket chart, which those of us that old school used to have the calculators that you'd borrow. But it's also the perfect size for cell phones. And so now every classroom has students basically check their phone into their pocket. It's assigned, so they know that it's secure. And teachers are really seeing kids interact more with each other. And when they're done with their work, not just like put their face down into their phone. So teachers are really appreciating it and actually they're getting a lot of positive feedback from kids as well, to the extent that one of the TAs in the office today said, oh, I just left it in my car for the day because I like not having it with me all the time. So I thought, that's great. So helping our kids to learn to adult and manage those distractions. So it's been a, it's been a great start.
I personally love that, that cellphone check-in thing. And, and I know a lot of districts are doing different things on how to deal with the cellphone situation. I think what Ridgefield's doing is a happy medium of not just removing them altogether, but allowing them to have them, but just not use them in class. So I appreciate that. So board, Donna, do you have anything? Amber?
Um, yeah, so I am going to be working on getting scheduled back into sort of a regular monthly coffee hour that fits in my family's schedule. And I'm going to probably stick with what I had been doing, which would be the third Thursday of the month from nine to 10 at lava Java. But also have been thinking about how to make time in other times of the week, evenings and sometimes weekends. For anyone else who has kids in sports, you might also spend a lot of time sitting at practices. So I may also add to my times when I would be like officially at Abrams Park or officially at the track at the middle school. So stay tuned for that, and I'll work with Joe to get that stuff posted on the board website. Excited for the school year starting. I know girls soccer team at the high school has their first home game tonight, which is exciting. Our state champion, so that, that will be cool to see. And we have a football game coming up too, which is exciting, first home game. So, and also Union Ridge has family movie night on Friday as well. So if your kids are younger, my family is probably going to be there rather than the football game. But they are excited about movies more than football at this stage of life. So that's it for me.
Emily?
Thank you. And I do have an announcement. I have gone ahead and turned in my resignation. My last and final meeting will be October 8th. This wasn't an easy decision, but this was a family decision. I think there's, I wanted to try and find the perfect time and there just isn't. So this is the right time for me. I've been so grateful and honored to be able to serve Ridgefield School District. And my community has meant a lot to me. And I'm so grateful for all of the relationships that I've had the opportunity to make as well. And I'm happy to help in any way to make this a smooth transition. And I know Ridgefield School District is on a great path and will continue to thrive. So I just, I just want to say thank you. Yeah, I thought there was one more thing, but and I'm just grateful for this opportunity. And I will continue to support Ridgefield School District in any possible way that I can because I do, I do love this community. So thanks.
Thank you. I'm so glad I get a follow-up on that. But Emily, it's been an honor to be able to, to sit here with you. And you leave me now being the OG. So, yeah, thank you for that. But no, I, you know, over the years, I've been able to, to get to know you a lot more and lean on you because you had the experience and could kind of help guide me through the path of learning this job. And I appreciate that. And like I said, it's, it's been an honor. You've served the community well and Ridgefield School District well. And, and have fun and enjoy this next phase of your life.
Thanks.
You're going to take a major pay cut.
I know, right? I mean, family decision. I do want to add one more thing. I'd like to put it in perspective. My youngest was a first grader when I started on the board, and she's a freshman now. So just it really, it's, it's been, it's been a good ride.
You have put your time in. And we, we appreciate that. So, no, thank you. And yeah, and yeah, other than that, I don't have anything else.
On behalf of, of everyone at the district, I just want to say thank you, Emily. And you have definitely given above and beyond in service to this district and our schools and this community. So we will miss you. I really would have liked to have worked with you a little longer. And I will, I'm sure the next thing people will ask is, so now what? So I will share at our next meeting, our timeline for searching for a replacement. But Emily represents Director District Number One, which is primarily our downtown area. So this is my first shout out to folks who live in that region that we will be advertising soon for that position. It is an application process. And your term was set to expire in a year. So at that point, it will be, it'll be open at the election. But we will have the board seek and appoint someone for the duration of your term.
All right, thank you. Dani, do we have any public comment? Not tonight. All right, old business.
Okay, so our first one is to approve revised board policy 2190, highly capable programs. We brought this for first read at the last board meeting. Again, this was just to align to current legislation and the WASD model policy. The district recommends approval.
I move we approve 8A as presented.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Next up is item 8B to approve revised board policy number 4130, Title I, Part A, Parent and Family Engagement. Again, this is second reading for minimal changes to align to WASD's model policy.
I move we approve 8B as presented.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And item 8C is our third policy that we brought for first read at the last meeting. This is to approve policy number 6220, Bid or Request Proposal Requirements. This is to align to updated legislation.
I move we approve 8C as presented.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Okay, and then moving on to new business. We are seeking to approve resolution number 2024-2025-001, Declaration of Surplus Property. This is that very small parcel of land, 2,178 square feet, not big enough to do a lot with. And we're seeking resolution to declare the property as surplus.
I move we approve 9A as presented.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Okay, and this one, I expect some discussion. So I'm moving on to 9B, First Read of Revised Board Policy Number 3122, Excused and Unexcused Absences. In reviewing our attendance policies and procedures, we took a look again at WASD's model policy along with state law. There's RCW's Revised Code of Washington and Washington Administrative Code, WACs, that define what is an excused or an unexcused absence for students. There was very small changes to our actual policy. But I would want the board to know that we are prepared to update our procedure as well after having some feedback from you as board members. The procedure is what details for our schools, what's excused and unexcused. So we do have the policy, which is again, minimal changes. The procedure itself, however, would lay out exactly what would be excused or unexcused. I'm happy to answer whatever questions you might have because I know this was a hot topic last year.
Is there action on this?
There is nice new business. So this is first read. But I would love to get some feedback from the board on what you'd like to see with that procedure. To give you just a little bit of background, last year, there was a new procedure put in place at Ridgefield High School where student-approved absences were no longer necessarily excused. So for example, if a student was homesick and a parent called in, that would be recorded as an excused absence for illness. If however, a family perhaps like went on a vacation and they called and said, well, please excuse my child for this vacation, then they were informed that it would not be excused, it'd be unexcused. I do know that Principal Palmer has worked with her staff to ensure that students are able to address missed work, whether it's excused or unexcused. We didn't have language about that in our procedure. And I think it's important for us to note that that is an expectation of staff to give students that opportunity to make up missed work that they may have missed regardless of the reason for that absence. This year, I know that View Ridge Middle School was also seeking to move towards that type of a procedure to just encourage our families to really think about scheduling those items that could potentially be scheduled at a different time of year or when there is a school break or holiday to consider doing that. We also had, prior to last year, a lot of students that did all sorts of appointments and things that may or may not have been able to be done outside of the school day. So this is really, I would say, and the intent from the school staff has been to address our high chronic absenteeism rate, which is available on the state OSPI website. When we start looking at how our students are performing, one of the metrics that we're, have the most discrepancy to other districts is our absentee rate. So our students are out a lot. It creates challenges for the students, but it also creates challenges for teachers when they're trying to navigate all of the different absences and makeup work. So I believe the intent is really to encourage families to have students at school as much as possible, provided that they're healthy. We certainly want them to stay home when they are ill. But I do think we want to update the procedure to more clearly define what a parent-approved activity is and to more clearly state the expectation that students be permitted to make up work.
Yeah, I, yeah, this is a touchy subject for sure. Partly because parental, you know, parents feel like that they, they're having some rights that they had before taken away from them. And I think that there's a process of kind of learning what, what is excused and what's not excused. And then the process that goes along after that. Consistency is a concern when one school has one policy and another one has, has a different one that, that makes things confusing. So if we could tie that in, I think that would help parents because if one's in an elementary school and one's in the high school and their students, their, their child is being, it's not punished, but it being unexcused and the other one's excused and they're wondering why. That's a hard question to answer.
Yeah, complete agreement from me, President Jones. Consistency is really important to me across our system and just across all of our students. And so this is something that I shared and took to our principals at all of our campuses and said, how do you guys want to handle this as a team? Because it's important to me that we're all going to be united in the way that we're going to approach this and what would be excused and what would be unexcused. So when we update the procedure, it will be applicable to all of our campuses in the same way. I will say that even in the existing pilot that was at the high school last year and in what we're proposing for this year in the procedure, parents still always still have the opportunity to come in, meet with the principal, have a conversation about what it is. Certainly, there are some things where a student might say, well, we're taking a trip. But then when you sit down with the family, you find out we're going to a memorial service for a grandparent or we're going to a wedding for cousins that we see, right? And so those are sometimes once in a lifetime and certainly family opportunities that we don't want students and families that we don't want students and families to have to miss. And so it really is about opening up the communication between our administrators and our, and our families. Um, and an effort again, I think, to reduce the absentee rate.
And, and I, again, I, I think that um it's important that the absentee rate is, is, we, we have to do something to try to move that needle to be better. Um, and this isn't a step in the right direction. Um, it's, again, it's just a change. Um, so we're trying to adapt to that. Um, I lost my train of thought because I had something that was following up on this, but um so consistency and um.
I'm just, is the process easy for the parent? You know, how, do you have to have a discussion every time? Or what categories would or wouldn't be excused? I think that's a really big process and it needs to be clear and also really hard to do, right? Because there are those, those things that you mentioned where, what came to my mind, there isn't always a control factor in, let's do this outside of school.
Right.
And so then what is that process? Is it clear? Is it as simple as we can make it as well? Um, and just, and how much does someone have to share also, right? Um, for it to be excused? Then my other concern is, yes, across all teachers, if it's unexcused and like still having the opportunity to complete that work because I, the feedback I've gotten from parents is it is not across the board with all of their teachers or their, their students. So that's a concern of mine too.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's probably my number one concern because really we're here to ensure students are learning. It's not necessarily that they have positive attendance rates. So um, you know, we do believe as students are at school more frequently that it is supporting their learning.
Yes.
Um, and we're all aware of students who excel even when they need to be gone a lot, like for club sports and some of those things. So I think um in terms of making it easy, it is putting the onus on the family to have that conversation, to contact the school and have that conversation um in order to have it move from an unexcused to an excused. Uh, I think if there was something that was a repetitive situation, I don't think they would need to come in every time. Um, I think then that's that conversation between the principal and the family around what is the purpose of the absence. Um, so for example, I know we have an elementary student who wants to leave half an hour early every day for gymnastics. And so that's, again, it's that conversation between, I think, the family and the principal around what's the impact of that child's learning and what's important for your family. And then let's come to some consensus on how we're going to treat that absence.
Um, on, on the point of around grading, I, I know the um the procedure document is different than what we're reviewing right now, but it does say in our policy document that a student's grades may be impacted if the absence is unexcused. So I think we should get clear on if that's our policy or not. Like if we are saying, and I, I, I think we heard a ton of feedback this last year, that um yeah, docking students' grades or not allowing for makeup work and things like that is like not working for kids. And I know that wasn't the intention when um Kristin started this sort of um refresh of um the practice at the high school. So I think if our policy language says it's not, you know, you might not be able to make up your work, then, then we need to just get clear from the policy side first. So that's under unexcused absences point two. So we should clean that up. I don't know how we want to say it, but that seems like a discrepancy in what I'm hearing us say and what the document says. Um, I worry a little bit about having, well, I, one, I wonder about the workload on principals for meeting with families every time there's a family thing that comes up. Um, something that I've been thinking about over the last year since this has been more on the top for families um and for our email inboxes as well and public comment um some months. It, it occurs to me just in like many workplaces, most workplaces, um workplaces are moving away from like vacation time and sick time, um, which seems to be a bit more archaic in terms of like an employer deciding what and how many days are fine for different kinds of activities. Um, I think it's more and more um common for employers and HR departments to be looking at like paid time off or personal days and it's really not the businesses or the employer's business. Um, how that time is being used. And I, I imagine that that is not how schools have ever looked at absences. Um, but it made me curious because I, I believe work has changed so much for adults in the last five years. Um, it, I can imagine that, you know, a family who's like, oh, I can get my appointment in at this time and my work schedule is super flexible in a different kind of way than it used to be. So I'm going to put my kid and I'm going to take care of this particular, whatever it is. Um, and then, and then I, I think also family engagements seem really important for us as a institution to say, yeah, that's really important. We, we, in this language, it specifies like cultural and religious practices or events. And then gosh, what's the difference for some families in some communities? A wedding is a religious ceremony. And so how are we, you know, but for others, they wouldn't use those words um to describe it. And that just seems like, gosh, a whole lot of um interpreting and you know, what, whether people would, would come to the school and say, this is this or this is that. Um, I'm curious about, obviously we can't just be like, whatever, come to school, don't come to school, it's fine. Um, that's not, that's not setting students up for success. Um, but I do wonder if there would be a way for us to have some limit around a parent excused day or something like that, that really we don't have to get into the details, isn't our judgment, isn't asking principals to make a call um on if the activity seems like kind of okay or not okay from their perspective. Um, but still within some reason, um to allow a certain number of those. So I'm not necessarily proposing that, but I'm curious about um if any other school districts are looking at um absences in that kind of way. And again, if grades are able to be made up, like grades aren't impacted, work can be made up. Um, then there doesn't seem to be a huge consequence for an unexcused, except that it doesn't feel good for a lot of people, right?
Well, it feels like it used to be really bad to have an unexcused absence.
So I also don't love the idea of like, it doesn't really matter, but it just doesn't feel good. And we're, what is that communicating to students and families about judgment calls that the district is making or not making about what's okay? One, one parent did write in last year and said, hey, all the list of things that can be excused are all really negative except for, you know, cultural religious practice or something. Um, and that sort of, you know, inadvertently is saying, well, you can get be sick or you can go to a funeral or something, but you, you know, you can't, a wedding or a celebration isn't something that we consider okay. And I understand that because the, the, the law is based on what we have to excuse. It's not, and then we have this little sentence that's wonderful for us is the five of us up here that we can define as board members, any additional criteria for that. So I think it would be something to consider. Um, I don't know the impact in terms of the implementation of something like that, but I kind of like the idea of having some limit, but still having an, an opportunity for families to say, this is a parent excused absence and not having to go into all the details. If, you know, whatever it is, uh, I feel like making that happen in practice might be simpler than having to have a conference every time a family had something come up that isn't on the legal list of um protected absences. So those are, those are my thoughts in, in um kind of looking at this and what I heard this last year. Um, my other big question is why aren't kids coming to school? And I don't know that it's because our attendance policy isn't strict enough. So to me, that's really the question that feels bigger. Um, so.
Yeah, I I'm gonna jump it done. Did you have anything? Okay, um, the, I would say number one goal is our students learning, right? Like are
Engaged.
Are they engaged? Are they um learning to the level that, that when they get ready to graduate that they, they have all the tools that they need to say that they've graduated from public education? Um, there's a second part of this is the, the teachers and that I, I do recognize that absenteeism does put a, a burden on how they can teach because they, they might be teaching a course and then they have to go back a week to, to catch somebody up. And um, and that's not easy. And that's unfortunately where we lean on our teaching professionals to, you know, I mean, i- it's not totally acceptable, but it is part of the job um to make sure that, that the kids are being taught. Um, and not just an unexcused, nope, you weren't here, that's zero credit. Um, that doesn't benefit the student. Um, and, and unfortunately, I know it puts extra burden on that teacher. And I, I'm assuming that this policy is to try to bring those two things closer. Um, not overburden the, the teacher and get the kid to school more. Um, I just want to make sure that we're targeting the right, um you know, a- as we're collecting data that we're seeing the needle move in the right direction and, and really the, the, the student that's chronically absent. Are we getting them back? Is it making a difference for them? Because I, I, I don't want to drag this on, but my daughters, their, their junior year were, was a big recruitment year and they were gone a lot. Um, they, they were traveling to try to get scholarships. And um luckily, they had amazingly awesome teachers that supported their journey and helped them get that because them maintaining a four point O affected their scholarships. Um, so without that maintaining that grade level, they wouldn't have gotten the opportunities that they did. Um, so it, it's really got to be a team effort. And um, you know, they were able to miss school, make up their work, maintain their four point O and get the scholarships and be able to achieve that next goal in their life. So um, but that was a, it wa- it was them working with their teachers and their teachers really working with them. Um, and so I appreciate when I see that, that part happen because without them traveling, they wouldn't have been seen. And, and so there's, there's um there's, there's a lot to it, right? And um, like, we're not gonna, we, we gotta iron it out. Um, because it is, it's confusing and, and complicated. And um, and yeah, we, we want our teachers to be thriving and not being like my, I'm one foot stuck in a hole because I can never kind of move forward because I'm always kind of working for the, the students that, that if they were just here, we would be able to move on, but we can't. And I recognize that. And being that I'm not a teacher, I only recognize probably a very small part of it. Um, but I just want the teachers to know, I do recognize that part of it.
Yeah, I think all of those perspectives are spot on. This is a complicated issue. There are things that we do during the school day, like a, like a band rehearsal or an experiment in science class that sometimes when your student is gone, um, they might get alternative work, but we really can't replace the experience that was a part of that class. So I do believe the intent is coming from a good place of wanting our children to be there to experience what we have to offer at school. I also um very much understand the perspective of, of families making decisions about their own children and where they spend their time. Um, in most cases with absences in the high school might be a little bit different. It's not the student making a decision about whether the child is at school or not. It's often the family that's making that choice for the student. So I do think we want to increase our communication and dialogue with our families. So if this is a lever perhaps to get more folks to the table for conversation, I think that's great. Um, I think inventive idea to think about like a PTO. So if that's something that the board as a whole is interested, we could come up with some ideas around that. Um, the chronic absenteeism from the state is defined in a very restrictive way. It's two school days per month over the course of the year, um, which is eighteen days and out of a hundred and eighty school days, that is ten percent. So if you think about missing ten percent of anything, that is probably going to have an impact on the outcome. Um, and at the same time, I think parents have a right to decide what are the outcomes that are most important to them and their family. So this is a, this is a hard one that is not going to make, no matter what decision we come to, it's not going to make everybody happy. But I think um in the spirit of what you were saying, President Jones, it is about trying to find that middle ground where everybody gives a little. So can we find some things that we could schedule outside the day or schedule around school? And at the same time, as school staff, can we also be flexible and understand that there are important events that sometimes happen during school year and we need to make allowances for that? So I just am proud of the conversation. And I know this was something that came up last year and I certainly want our community to know that we are continuing to have this dialogue and that we're going to pilot something this year. But we will be collecting data to be able to come back and find out in the, at the end of the year, is it working? Is it not working? How might we adjust that procedure again as we go into the next school year to um have better outcomes for everyone?
Thank you. Appreciate that. Is there any need for executive session?
There is not.
There's not. So with that being said, we are adjourned. Thank you.